Evening. It's a good turnout. The snow is not falling. The snow is not falling. It's a good thing. I'm Jim Miller, your moderator. Welcome. We have a lot to cover tonight. Lots of important things, as with any time meeting. But we will try to be expeditious and move right along. I would first like to start by asking any veterans of the armed forces or anyone currently serving in our military to stand if you can, or ladies or gentlemen. If everyone else can stand, we will have the pleasure of introducing the president, Zoe Perlett of Canterbury Rattles.
Agents of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on a nation under our individual liberty and justice law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perlett. Thank you, Zoe. Our agent is alive, well, and run by his teachers and long-term adults. Now, there is one veteran in particular, well-known to many of you from his 20 years as town moderator, who is not here with us tonight. Wayne Mann passed away earlier this week. He will be greatly missed. Memorial Day Parade won't be the same, that's for sure. It seems that in recent years Canterbury has lost so many elders who've dedicated a good portion of their lives to make our town what it is today. They were truly pillars of our community, and Wayne definitely was in that group. I'm sure his wife Ruth and the rest of their family would appreciate your prayers and cards. But they are understandably asking for privacy right now, so please don't call or visit just yet. So I would like us to take a few moments of silence to honor Wayne. Thank you. And yeah, it's probably a good idea to silence those cell phones. I would next like to recognize select board chair Bob Skeenson, who has some brief comments about the dedication for this year's annual report in honor of Mike Capone.
Apparently this doesn't equip us, so this is going to make it sound a bit... Mike, thank you. So the 2022 annual report for the town of Canterbury is dedicated to Mike Capone. In recognition of his exceptional and extensive service to this town. I can read the dedication, but I assume you guys can all read. But Mike's service has created this town, for those of you who don't know, included two years on economic development, three years on the planning board, four years on the budget committee, and nine years as a selectman. In all that time and on all those boards and committees, no amount of time was too much and no effort was too great for Mike to put into this town. If you ask anyone who has privilege to serve with Mike or who has followed in his footsteps, we all say the same thing. Michael was a model of consistency, of quiet contemplation, strategic forethought, and forceful execution. He served as a selectman before we had a town administrator, when the selectmen performed all the administrative duties with the assistance of Jan. And we operated the government directly. So Mike was our de facto town administrator, managing the town's business as a volunteer at no small cost to his own business. He did so well that he set the standard for all future selectmen and town administrators, and laid the groundwork for the professional town government we have today. So Mike, thank you very much for your service to this town.
Thank you, Bob. And Cheryl, I believe you have something you'd like to pass along.
Yes, Bob. First of all, thank you for all the years... Thank you, Bob, for all the years of service. Do you remember the first time you met?
Check out line in Shaw's.
And what were you called?
It's when I knew I was moving to a small-town, freight community, because in the checkout line in Shaw's, I was reminded that I had cars to register at home.
Moving right along against a hang-on-the-board, I never talked a lot. I just observed Bob as being a selectman for 13 years and served on various committees. He worked tirelessly, tirelessly, to lead the people to oppose the action of landfill and preserve the riverland. And he was on the recycling program, helping institute pageant turn. While he was on board, we had the sale of Gold Star Property, removal of the Virgil Maramont, and the town rebound was his duty. He helped streamline the office, so the town office became more efficient. Town administrator, every man with his business background worked well. Sometimes it was a little like Zasper being there. It all came to a good end. Thank you, Bob.
All right, we're getting closer now. I just want to double-check that you have your official ballots, and you have your yes and no card. And the yes is green because it's St. Patty's Day. There are extra copies of the town report where you checked in. I guess you didn't grab one. Please note the location of the fire exits. If you have children here tonight in the library, please remember to bring them home with you. And if this is your first town meeting, please raise your hand. All right, I would like to point out some of the tables in the back, because there's some good stuff there. The Canterbury Community Farmers Market. Beth Blair is going to say something to you.
Hello. I am Beth Blair. I am one of the board members of the Canterbury Community Farmers Market. I welcome you all tonight. If you notice on your seats, she gave you a little bit of information about the market. I'm very brief, but there are a couple of important things. First thing is, the market opens on May 31st, which is a Wednesday, 4:00 in the library parking lot in the field next to the Elkins Library. The second important thing is, this is our 17th year in that location. So if you are new in town and you haven't been there, or if you are old in town and you haven't been there, we cordially invite you to join us on any Wednesday. We like old people, we like young people, we like kids, we like dogs. Please come, shop the bounty of the market, bring a friend, bring those pesky out-of-town relatives, bring your lawn chairs. We've got great music every week, all summer long. Next thing is, we're always a member of volunteers. If anybody wants to get in on your neighbors, wear a fun lunch. It's a huge physical effort to put the market up and down every week. We don't have to do it, but we do, the vendors are very, very appreciative. And if anybody would like to support the market by becoming a member, step on back to the table, and we've got information about that. At the table in the back, we also have a lot of goodies. They apply some of our vendors, and also they apply some of our board members. We have hot tea, in case anybody feels a little faint during the proceedings, having sustenance to keep voting. Come on back, we will take care of you. Hope to see you back sometime tonight, and certainly this summer. Thanks for your support for 17 years of years.
Thank you, Beth. And the food is available at no charge?
I forgot one thing. There are two pieces of green duct tape on the back of a chair in this one part. If you see it on the chair in front, you text your neighbor and tell them that they want a lovely plant. Come back and pick it up by the end of the meeting.
All right. We also have a table for the Canterbury Historical Society, which is giving away free books. Especially if you're new to town and you want to know what the heck this town is all about. There's this book, there's a book which I did not have. There's a book about Canterbury Fair, which is fascinating. And there's a Canterbury Community Business Directory, which will help you to get around. We also have a table for the friends of the Elkins Public Library, and they are doing their information, and they are selling suits at a discount, and they are taking orders for seats. So just one little thing they do besides books. All right, before we move into the business portion of the meeting, I want to go over some housekeeping items. And again, I appreciate your patience. First, I'd like to recognize and express my gratitude to our Tuesday election team, and ask for forgiveness for anyone I don't mention, but I think I got them all. Assistant Town Moderator Kathy Dory, so raise your hand when I... Follow you around. Our stand court, our police escorts, which also managed to get us pizza. Sam Pats, town clerk. And the mayor and his staff for setting the whole thing up and setting this up tonight, and keeping the parking area and sidewalks a lot clearer than I could have, because it was in the teeth of the Norristown. So, pretty much. And our elected clerks, encounters, Jan Stapp, PJ Entwistle, Ellen Bassett, Ray Crady, Ray Chesley, Kelly Capps, Steve Brish, and Lori Nykel. And almost last, supervisors of the checklists, Brenda Murray, Soika, and Pam Smarling. And Al and Lisa, for clearing the cars off late Tuesday morning. All right, I want to introduce the folks on the platform tonight. We have Town Administrator Ken Folsom. Selectmen Casey, Cheryl Gordon, and Russwick. Sam Pats, if someone will stand, they may think you haven't paid something. And we'll work the taxpayer. He will be taking the minutes, so we want to make sure he can catch everything that needs to be in there for the sake of history. Without objection, I am granting the right of voice without vote to non-residents Mike Gamache, Mike Labrecq, and John O'Connor, should it be necessary to give their comments to the meeting about anything to do with fire trucks, or police, or the town roads. Is there any objection? Seeing none. So purely ground rules. For speaking, practice respect and civility at all times. It's okay to disagree. It is not okay to be disagreeable or disrespectful. Before speaking, raise your hand, please, and be recognized by me, the moderator. That's not a thing I, you know, do for myself, it's the state law. Wait for a microphone to come to you, or in this case, you can come to the podium there. But if you need assistance, the microphone will be brought to you. It's important that we hear you, so speak as if you were about to eat the microphone. This is the best policy. First time you are recognized to speak, please state your name and where in town you live. And a lot of this will sound familiar, but it's good to go over. Address all comments to me, the moderator. If you are asking a question, you may follow up or clarify. I, as moderator, will recognize those who have not yet spoken to an issue before anyone who has already said something wants to come and say something else. That's just common courtesy. Canterbury residents only may speak unless granted voice without vote status. Please add to previous comments, but do not just repeat what has been said before. Again, in the interest of time. If you wish to call the question, you must raise your hand and be recognized first. Calling the question before people have had an opportunity to present the essentials of a Warren article, or before people have had at least some opportunity to ask questions or speak to an issue, is in direct opposition to the point of town meeting, which is for townspeople to make informed decisions on behalf of the entire community. In that regard, if that happens, I will not recognize the person calling the question if it's not at the very beginning of a Warren article. It's simply a service to you. However, you, this body, is a legislative body. By law in New Hampshire, you have the right to vote to overturn any ruling that I make. And I take that very seriously, and so should you. So again, if you disagree with that, you can overturn it. I will try not to abuse it, believe me. Calling the question, motions must be seconded and passed by a two-thirds majority vote. Motions, we follow simplified rules order. Motions must be moved and seconded. Again, state your name, where you live, clearly, so that Sam can capture it. And the mover will have the first right to speak after the presenter of each Warren article has finished introducing it. All amendments must be given to the town board in writing and readable before we vote. One motion or amendment at a time. Any amendments involving money must include a dollar amount. These rules may be altered by the assembled town meeting voters by majority vote. If you believe I have erred in terms of procedure, please request a point of order, because it'll happen, I'm sure. The meeting will decide. Again, a majority vote is required to overrule the moderator. Any questions? All right, let's begin. We'll start with the results of the Shaker Regional School voting on Tuesday. The school moderator, Sumner Gole, was elected over William Wright by four votes, 361 to 357. The Belmont School Board, Mark Eckberg, 427, and Jill Smith by 34, over Eddie Perkins, who was a write-in with 56 votes. The Canterbury School Board rep, Alice Todd, 345 votes, over Marcel Pepic, 249. Article III, the CBA, the agreement involving staff, was a yes by 513 to 243. Article IV, 542 yes, 211 no. The budget was approved, 592 to 180. Article VI, the Facilities and Grounds Expendable Trust, was approved, 569 to 201. And the Technology Expendable Trust, Article VII, was approved, 609 to 161. Canterbury's warning, Article I, to choose all necessary town officers of the year ensuing. 387 votes were passed on Tuesday, including about 80 absentee that voted the day before. Really tremendous. 100 absentee ballots were all together. Congratulations not just to the winners, but to everyone who stepped up and ran for office. The more people get called, the stronger our community becomes. Results of the election, if you haven't already seen them. For selectmen, Scott Doherty won with 212 votes, Sumner Gole had 45, and Calvert Todd, 124. Cemetery trustee, John Vogel, 369 votes. Moderator, Jim Miller, squeaked in with 364 votes. Planning board, our two reps, Richard Markoud, 214 votes, and Logan Snyder, 205, over Lucy Nichols with 184. Library trustees, Linda Reindu, 345, and Sarah Melasekka, 324. And trustee of trust funds, Greg Heath, 360 votes. So congratulations. And congratulations to the voters. I ask those who won their town elections to please come up to the platform after the meeting to be sworn in, because it's just not official until you get sworn in, so please don't forget. Before we start Article II, which is in your annual report. Some parents of young children hoping not to have to wait until late in the evening to hear, discuss, ask questions about, and vote on Warren Article IX, have requested that we move said article earlier in order of business. Without objection, I am changing the order to address Article IX right after Article IV. Are there any objections? Hearing none, we will start. Article II, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $850,000 for the purchase of a new fire truck, and to authorize the withdrawal of $360,000 from the fire truck capital reserve created for this purpose. Furthermore, with a balance of $490,000 to be paid for by the selectmen accepting a firefighter's grant, or alternatively, and in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, to authorize the selectmen to issue not more than $490,000 of bonds and notes, and to authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon. This requires a three-fifths ballot vote, and it is recommended by the selectmen. And Bob will be speaking to this. And we will start at the one-hour clock once we are settled on what we're voting on. You don't want to make it. Sure, I'll entertain a motion for the Warren article. Name and any part of town you live in?
Yale, Nashville, Bath and Shell.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Crady. I knew I would miss a point of order right now.
There we go. Well, you know, there's nothing like a fire truck to drive turnout. I have occasionally thought about putting one on the Warren, and we do. Anyway, thank you. Those of you who have been coming to town meetings for a while may have noticed that every decade, we buy a fire truck for a major piece of apparatus. In the 90s, we bought Engine 3. In the 2000s, we bought the Tanker. In the teens, Engine 2. And now, it's the 20s, time once again. So I will say that we're replacing Engine 3, which was the truck that we bought back in the 90s. And so, most of us, as we approached our 30th birthday, were in the full bloom and vigor of our youth. Fire trucks approaching their 30th birthday are not. On the capital improvement plan and in the capital reserve planning, Engine 3 was scheduled for replacement in 2020. The fire department has done an outstanding job expanding its service life by adjusting operating protocols, making judicious, and sometimes creative repairs to get some additional years of it. It still works, but not reliably enough, and not for much longer. It can't pass a pump test. The pump has been rebuilt a couple of times already, and cannot be rebuilt again. Corrosion in the truck is at the stage of its life rampant. Chief Gamache told us an interesting story at the last select board meeting where a valve failed on the truck and emptied 1,000 gallons of water in the garage. Thankfully, not on somebody's driving. So it's time, it's time to replace this truck. The town needs two functional, reliable response engines, a prime engine and a backup. For serious incidents, might require two trucks. There are times when one truck is down for repairs or an accident, or had impeded something, an accident or other takes out one truck. It's pretty hard to get down to Hertz or Enterprise to rent a fire truck. So the fire chief and the department have applied for federal grants over the last several years, engaging the assistance of a professional grant writer, and they will do so again. And if we get the grant, great. But we no longer have the luxury of waiting on the grant. Supply chain and manufacturing issues, as it certainly didn't proceed back in 2020, mean it could easily be 18 months to two years before we take delivery of a new truck, even if we were it down. So the proposed Warren article has absolutely no tax rate impact this year. Payments on the bond or notes won't begin until we take deliveries. In 2024, or possibly in 2025, the tax impact then will actually be negligible. 10-year municipal bonds still carry a relatively low interest rate, and we estimate the annual payment over the life of the loan will average about $57,000 a year. That's 15 and a half cents on the tax rate in 2022 values. I should also point out that 15 cents came off the tax rate this year as we paid off the Stanley House loan. And a further 32 cents will come off next year when we pay off the municipal building fund. I'm getting perilously close to the edge of my expertise, but I will also say that the proposed truck will be, I believe they call a line truck. In other words, it's a standard production model. It's not heavily customized or exotic. The fire department has proposed proposals through a couple of different national competitive bid programs. We have Deputy Chief Newgerdy and Deputy Chief Darder here to answer any questions that you may have specifically related to the truck. That's all for now.
Scott, would you like to add more technical details?
I guess the major officials, Scott Dory, from San Warren Road here in Canterbury. And I think Bob had to get a really good job of kind of sorting out present state. The fire engine that we're proposing to replace is a 1996. So roughly 30, 30 years old by the time it's something new here. We have had, including the embarrassing 1,000-gallon spill incident, a number of really age-related problems. We lost power, engine power, and all the engine tire service were weak for repairs then. One of the other issues we're having is due to the age of the engine, so they don't get the parts anymore to fit. So that's another issue that we're facing. So I think really that's all that I have, we're here to answer questions. So we'll be glad to do that.
Open up the questions. Yes, sure.
This is Trixie Rasha from Center Road. My question is, this is going to be a fire truck that runs on diesel fuel for the next 30 years. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, please?
Mae Cradick, over. Is the plan to scrap this for money later on, is this to sell it? Is the intention, the board knows this, is the intention for any of those funds to go back to pay off if this is approved? A little toward that, is it going to the general fund? Do you have any?
Defer to the board, actually, I think. Typically, all equipment goes to what's called White Farm. It's an auction for a state of New Hampshire property. Any property that the town sells through that, the funds go into the general fund.
Other questions? Your name and where you live.
I'm Chris Mike. Oh, sorry. You can be the first.
Jean Cody, we have to tell them all for the fire department. I, I just, I'm asking a grant question, I guess. Why did we not get the grant? Does anybody know? Anybody speak to that? And can we still apply for it?
It's okay, I will. So, unfortunately, the way the bid process or the grant process works, we don't know why we didn't get it.
Okay, they don't give you any indication?
I wish they would. So, so if it's okay, I can give a brief overview of that process. Okay. So, we applied for what's called a P and G grant, assistance to the fire industry. It's a federal grant that is administered through the National Fire Administration. So, our packet actually is going in already, and right now is at the National Fire Packet with probably a couple of thousand other applications. Peers are flown in from all over the country to judge these applications. Unfortunately, we get zero feedback. We've been very successful over these years. Since 2018, we've gotten a little over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants, so we've done pretty well. But, we don't know why we would apply to. It's a mystery. I wish we, obviously, we know, we could have done better on something, so.
And, yeah, if anyone else could go to the podium and then work, and you...
Hi, I'm Alice Todd, Illinois Memorial Road. And so, did we not receive the grant this year? It is still pending. What happens if we don't receive the grant?
So, the grant, we literally just filed for this year's grant. The grant that we've been referred to was last year.
Okay, so what happens if we don't receive that grant?
If we don't receive the grant, then we buy the truck, assuming the meeting notes gets on that article. So, we're taking three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars out of our savings account, and then we'll raise, we'll finance four ninety. We'll finance it through either municipal bond package, or there are finance, there are lease rates, finance leases to zero resident units. We, the board would take whichever one has the lowest interest rate.
Hi, Rick Rocker, Mayor's Road.
Could you, I know, you can talk as loud as I can, but it helps.
I can use my high school voice, but...
Was there any investigation of a refurbished truck?
So, in my experience, which is around the forty-one or forty-two year mark of the fire service, I don't think refurbished is the way, though. You know, speaking for our volunteers, because remember, we're primarily a volunteer fire department. I wouldn't want to send one of our volunteers into a fire with a refurbished engine. I've seen them, I've got some experience with them, but it would not be my choice for, for all residents, especially.
Thanks, Scott. Other questions, comments?
I'm wondering if because we are a feeder town of sorts to the highway, there's any data that can help us understand the use of our fire, fire equipment by our volunteer fire department? How many fires do we have in town versus how many times does our fire equipment get called to the highway for an accident or something going on there? And I ask this question because I'm wondering, are there any federal monies available that we could apply to?
Good question. So, the highway certainly has an impact. A fair number of our calls are actually on the highway. I can tell you that every year that Priscilla was a legislator, she tried to bring up a bill in the State House so that we could get some funding in those towns along the highway, because we actually subsidize all of that response. And the answer from the other two hundred and one towns in the state was, no, you can't have any more money. If we get the grant, that is federal money. There are no federal monies of which I am aware that would be used to offset operating expense at a, at a fire department or fire unit.
Lisa, actually, I can answer. Lisa, I think part of your question was number of fires. I did poll the last three years. So, 2022, seventeen here in town. We went out of town for mutual aid to other municipalities six times. 2021, eleven in town, and we went out nine for mutual aid. 2020, there were twenty-two fires here in town, and we went out of town eight times for mutual aid. That's one.
So, when you say mutual aid, is that a response to the highway or to other towns that have fires in their communities?
Other towns.
Okay, so that's not highway?
Correct. The highway is considered, it is Canterbury. So, so when we respond on that, we're still responding in Canterbury.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? Comments?
I see that the, the fire truck capital reserve fund has three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in it, or it doesn't have more in it, and that's why I don't think it's drawn.
And we have, hang on, it's like, God, could we get a bigger font? Currently, there's three hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars in the fire truck capital reserve. This town meeting, should we vote yes on the Warren Article for capital reserves, another fifty thousand will go into that fund. The, the objective of that fund, when it was created and, and is built, is that by the time we need a truck, we have roughly fifty percent of the purchase price. I don't know that anyone anticipated that the purchase price was going to go up by two hundred thousand dollars in, in three years, but, so, so we would withdraw what it says on here, leaving some in there to build the fund for the next, so we don't close the fund entirely, we'll be building for the next truck, which would likely be in the mid-thirties.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Ike Jackson, Baptist Hill Road. Will the bond be paid off before we need to buy another truck?
That's hopefully the plan. We're looking at taking a ten-year note. So, if we, if we take delivery in 2024, then the ten-year note would be out in thirty-four, at which point Engine Two will be twenty-four years old. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of, that's how the timing is laid out.
Other questions?
Alling in the Northwest Road. Every ten years or so, we're buying a truck. What if we bought like four years ago? Or something we bought, like, there was a truck we bought like four years ago, five years ago. What was the latest one?
I think it was six years ago.
And are we still paying that off right now? Are we still paying that?
Uh, no.
Okay. And what truck was that? Which one?
Engine Two. Currently, currently labeled Engine Two.
Currently labeled Engine Two, and we're replacing Engine One?
Three.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Rick Marko, Baptist Hill. So, the truck is going to take eighteen to however many months to fabricate. What's the chances, do we, if we say we want a truck today, do we get priced today, or do we get priced in two more years from now?
Now, once, once the order goes in, the bid price is firm, and there would be a contract that commits us to that purchase price and commits the vendor to that price.
Good question. Any other questions? Yes.
Is there any possibility at all to self-fund the truck? Can Canterbury issue bond with townsfolk? The interest rates are a lot higher, the truck's two hundred thousand dollars more than it was a few years ago. Could we, could we self-fund this and issue bonds to the townsfolk?
I'm unaware of a mechanism under state law that allows the town to do that. When we bond, we do it through municipal bonding bank. It can also go out to other financing sources, leasing companies, or lending banks, but the last auction for municipal bonds from the Hampshire Bond Bank had a, it came in at a two-point-seven-one percent interest rate, which is good compared to what's out there at the moment. So, I think that that would be the likely course.
You think it would get that close to that same rate, three percent?
You know, one can hope. The plus to the municipal bond bank is that those bonds are not taxable, so they don't have to be taxed paid on, so they typically come with a lower interest rate to the borrower.
I was just curious if it'd actually be that rate, or it could be six percent rate or something like that.
You know, it could be. It'll have to be what we look at. You know, we calculated the payment on three percent on the estimate, and they give us at approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars per year payment.
Thank you. Yes.
Maybe I'll find out. I'm from Laurel Road, so, Scott, I just have a couple of questions. So, my only experience with a fire truck is just watching it come down, come down to the town center, like, or dry or, or whatever. So, I'm, I get a little confused between truck number one, truck number two, truck number three. So, is it possible, could you just kind of talk about the differences between the three trucks? And like, which one typically goes out? And, you know, if you have an incident out on the highway, do all the trucks go out? Does just one truck go out? Truck number two go out? Can you just kind of talk about, who goes out and why?
So, we don't actually have a truck here in town, if you want to get really technical. A truck is a ladder-carrying piece of apparatus. We don't have any of those. We have engines here in town that do double duty. They carry a lighter complement of ladders as well as water, and have a pump. So, the normal pecking order, let's say I ninety-three, it's a ninety quart for a pump. Engine Two, the newer engine, the six-year-old engine, is going to roll first, followed by the tanker. The tanker is, somebody help me out, two thousand?
Thousand gallons.
Thousand gallons of water. So, it's there for two reasons. The engine is carrying the extrication tools, and it's about twenty, twenty-two tons to protect us while we're working out on the highway. The tanker would follow, are behind that, to protect us with however many tons a thousand gallons of water is. The other advantage of the tanker is it's there to supply water if we get hurt. So, that's the normal pecking order. Let's say we have a structure fire here in town. Once again, the newer engine is going to roll first. So, that's the most reliable by far. That would be followed by the tanker, once again, with a water supply. So, the oldest engine would roll after that. And that's it. We just have a rescue, and that's it for fire apparatus. We have a couple of, you probably see them around town, small, what we call foresters, pickup trucks with smaller water tanks and, and some limited supply imposed for brush cars, for watering, and things like that. And that's it. That's all we've got. Hopefully, Canterbury will never get large enough to be the truck, a two-truck, because the, the last one I specked out at the state was one-point-seven million dollars. That was about two years ago, so it's probably over two million.
Emily Preston, Southwest Road. I want to speak in favor of this. I have fortunately never experienced a fire in my home, but I had witnessed my neighbor in his house on fire, and it's terrifying. The firefighters where they're working, it was fifteen below zero, and they work so hard. And I would like to know, they have the right equipment to save the people in that house, to save their pets, and to possible save the house, all while keeping themselves safe. So, I would like to speak in support, and I hope you guys will also support this as well. I think they've done a great job in trying to make business affordable as possible. Thank you.
Yes. Beth?
Just out of curiosity, it's going to be two years until we get the new truck. Are we covered in that time with this aging truck that is failing, pieces falling off and dropping water? And if it fails totally, what do we do? Thank you.
I, I think honestly, that the honest answer is, we intend to keep it going one way or the other. And it's, it's chewing gum and, and, you know, baling wire and all that stuff at this point, so, but that's, that's our intent, is to keep it going for as long as we need it.
Any other questions?
Hi, Lisa Marko, Baptist Hill Road. Just have a finance question. If old truck number three is sold at White Farm, what do you do with the money? Does it go back into the capital funds, or does it, it used to pay for part of the bond?
All, all inbound revenue of that type goes into the general fund, and then it's available for whatever, whatever use. It can offset taxes in the future. It builds up the unbalance. I also think the thing is worth hundreds of dollars.
But then chewing gum.
Hello, state my name, this is my first time here.
Name and where you live.
Megan Fordy, I'm on Baptist Road. My question's back through you is, can you explain the process of how our fire department works, being that it's volunteer, what the protocol is if someone calls, I'm one, there's a fire? What are the steps needed in order to get that truck to a person's house, and what are the odds that Comper or Pennecook is going to get their first?
So, you asked a semi-impossible question for me to answer, but I'll do my best. So, the normal protocol, we are a, what's called the combination department. We have an EMT, Dave, who's over here seeing, who is here during the week, normally between seven-thirty and four, Dave? Seven-thirty, four to answer medical calls. And we have a part-time chief. Other than that, we're a staff of volunteers, so we have to get up in the middle of night or come on on weekends, or, or whenever. So, to answer your question regarding mutual aid departments, I don't think it's possible to give you a firm answer. So, mutual aid is typically activated by a structure fire, a confirmed structure fire call. Mutual aid is not meant to, to kind of take over fire protection for this town, it's meant to supplement. So, if we're fortunate, the closest, if it was a fire, let's say, somewhere here in the center of town, it would normally be Comper who came on mutual aid. So, if we're fortunate, the closest Comper engine would be available in service. Same with, that would be same with Bellwark. We have mutual aid agreements with all of those departments. If you remember the, the fire calls that I spoke about earlier, talked about mutual aid responses out of town. It's meant to be a two-way street. So, could I guarantee a mutual aid response from anyone? No. I hope that answers your question.
In your experience, have there been instances where you guys arrive and there's already mutual aid?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're, once again, volunteers coming from home. We're, and we're fortunate, don't get me wrong. Comper is a full-time career department, so there are people on duty twenty-four-seven, literally, who are, are sitting in fire stations scattered around the city of Comper. But, they're not here to service Canterbury. They're, they're meant to service the, for the city of Comper, and someone to come on and get in these counties.
Any other questions? Comments? Any other questions or comments?
I do look to your ability. It's a question, we purchased this truck. The many factors that when purchasing a truck, how secure do we feel that they don't go out of business? And it actually gets completed? Or if we purchased this truck and it doesn't, uh, we look for more people and manufacturers going in?
I can't think of an instance, at least lately, where a major manufacturer has gone out of service or we're not going to take it off brand.
Okay.
So, you know, the ones that we would wind up with are old, reputable builders of fire apparatus. Thank you.
Yes?
Jeff Hubble, I'm on Happy Road. Just come to the mic. All people like to be with Eric Hayes.
Jeff Hubble, I'm on Happy Road. And I'd like to move this question. Please.
Okay. Question has been moved and seconded. We will be... We will be voting on calling the question. It requires a two-thirds majority. If you are in favor of calling the question and cutting off debate, raise your green card. If you are opposed to cutting off debate, raise your red card. Which is on the other side here, green card. The green cards have it. So the question has been called. I am going to read the Warren article one more time and you have your blue ballots. And are we coming around with ballot boxes or...? Okay. So the ballot boxes will be coming to you. But let me read the article and then you will have one hour to vote on it. Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $850,000 for the purchase of a new fire truck and to authorize the withdrawal of $360,000 from the fire truck capital reserve created for this purpose. Furthermore, with a balance of $490,000 to be paid for by the selectmen accepting the firefighter's grant or alternatively, and in accordance with the provisions of Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, authorize the selectmen to issue not more than $490,000 of bonds and notes and to authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon. Three bits, ballot vote required. You may commence voting. We will move on. So that will wrap up at two minutes to nine. We'll move on to article three. It'll move, it'll be done by nine o'clock. Uh, article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,228,700 for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. Majority vote required, recommended by the selectmen. Do I have a motion? A second? All right, thank you very much. And Bob will speak to the budget.
Okay. Uh, we have a lot to get to, so we're going to keep the intro short this time. And then we'll take some questions. So overall, town finances are strong. We have a healthy unreserve fund balance. We have a million and a half dollars in our capital reserve savings. We underspent 22 budget by $127,327. We are not overburdened with debt. Our long-term debt payments are a very low 7% of the total operating expense. Our long-term debt principal balances, even if we're on our two passes, are a very nice downward trajectory. As noted earlier, the Sam Lake House loan was paid off last year and the municipal building bond to be paid off this year. And the Gold Star Bond retires in 2025. Uh, overall, the proposed 2023 operating budget is up a 3.95% over last year. Given that inflation is running over 6% on everything and inflation on the things that the town's by, like fuel, uh, energy, asphalt, is running considerably higher than that. You know, many of our municipalities, including some of our immediate neighbors, uh, we're facing some double-digit operating budget increases this year. So we feel that a 4% increase is about as tight as we can make it. For this, we have to acknowledge the ongoing efforts of our town administrator and our department heads. So I give a thank you now to Ken Folsom, Sam Pats, John Connor, Chief Mike Breck, Chief Mike Kamash, Rachel Baker, our library director, and, uh, and the guidance we received from our budget committees here. The highlights of the operating budget, uh, the cost drivers are the usual culprits. So wages, um, cost of living adjustments and performance-based increases are averaging 5%. Generally capped, anyone's individual increase at 6%. The total wages in the budget are up 7.3%. And that's because we've had some additional positions, uh, or some additional powers. Uh, retirement and healthcare are always, always helpful in terms of driving up, um, operating costs. You know, retirement expense is $123,258. Health insurance, the town pays $245,000. Electricity, propane, heating oil, gasoline, diesel, all line items, if you review the budget, that you'll notice are considerably higher to the town, like they are for everyone else. Rescue services, you know, this is our ambulance service from Pennecook Rescue and from Belmont, uh, both of which have gone up again. I will say that Belmont finally noticed that they hadn't changed the amount that we paid them in the last 15 years. So they had to go up this year. Those are the sort of the budget highlights. And I think at this point, uh, in the interest of the immediacy, uh, we'll just pick some questions.
Okay. Anyone have questions or, uh, or comments? Well, could we screen to you?
Who are you and what have you done with the people of Canterbury?
Yes, you.
And what is this going to be per thousand or how are we due our tax rate?
I didn't calculate the entire budget per thousand. The impact of the increase from last year to this year is 33 cents per thousand. So that's, so the 4% increase would be another 33 cents per thousand of the tax bill.
On top of a extra buck for the school district?
School district is unpredictable in my opinion. Um, one hopes it stays where it was last year. Um, the, um, you know, that's largely driven by how much federal revenue the school district gets, special education programs and everything. We find out what the, we find out what the school district raise will be for real. It's usually in the fall when it comes time to set the tax rate. I know we all voted on the budget, uh, but their revenue projections are as, um, I won't say soft as the town's, but I think it's somewhat unpredictable and a lot depends on how much federal income comes in.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will ask for a vote. If you wish to vote yes to support article three, you use your green card. Now would be red. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,228,700 for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. Majority vote required. Are you sure they attached the red things to the back?
I see a whole, I see a lot of green, but I do see red. Thank you very much. The article passes.
Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $178,000 to be deposited following capital reserves. Highway equipment, 10,000. Highway truck, 30,000. Highway grader, 30,000. Rescue truck, 12,000. Fire truck, 50,000. Landfill closure, 1,000. Towny building maintenance, 5,000. Highway loader, 30,000. Highway Dako, 10,000. Recommended by the selectmen. Do we have a motion? Yes? And a second? Which number? Okay. Bob?
Uh, this is the same capital reserve savings program that we've run for the last several years. Um, the dollar amounts are the same, with the exception that we added $5,000 this time to replenish the emergency building payments fund. The overall tax rate impact of this specific order and article is 47 cents on a thousand. Essentially unchanged from last year. That's kind of all I have. Unless there are specific questions about the amounts going into the different funds.
Any questions? Yes?
They're cracking over just to double check, I guess. So that's the same amount that we're already paying per thousand right now? Or is it saying an addition to that, 47 cents of a thousand?
Uh, the tax rate impact of the capital reserve transfers would be almost the same. I mean, that additional $5,000 doesn't have much impact on that, doesn't have much impact.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments? Then I will call for a vote. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $178,000 to be deposited into the capital reserve counts that I have already delineated. You're welcome. Recommended by the selectmen. All those in favor would show your green card, please. Opposed, red cards? Motion passes. We are now moving article nine, as I described before. And then we will resume with article five after that. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to instruct the Shaker Regional School Board to form a committee to initiate a review of the feasibility and suitability for the town of Canterbury to withdraw from the Shaker Regional School District, pursuant to the provisions of the Hampshire RSA 19525, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,000 for the purpose of engaging educational and legal consultants as necessary to complete the review. Recommended by two selectmen, not recommended by one selectman. Do I have a motion? Okay, do we have a second? Holly? Okay. And Bob? Thoughts on this?
So, um, essentially, this is the same process that we initiated last year to review and evaluate Canterbury's educational options. Only this time it comes with the addition of some modest funding for educational and legal expertise. I know there are folks here who wish to speak to this and invest it, but I can tell you that as a member of that study committee and my fellow committee members that I see here tonight, I can tell you that it soon became really clear that the process was not clear. To complete a conclusive review with confidence, we really need to have legal and educational advice that the committee members simply don't possess. It also appeared to us that relevant state processes are constructed around withdrawal of one town from a multi-town regional district. With only two towns in Shaker Regional, recommending withdrawal could effectively dissolve the district, meaning that education plans would be required for both Canterbury and Belmont hence the need for some educational consultancy. The reason that the two of us would support this one article is really that there are many parents in our community who want to know if they can have choices. They want to know what those choices might be. The town needs to know whether creating that choice is practically or financially reasonable. Uh, and we need to really answer these questions definitively or we're just going to keep talking about it to no end satisfaction. So I would say, before I turn it over to Danielle, I think, is that a vote in favor of this one article tonight is not a vote that's in favor of withdrawing from the school district. It's a vote to better enable the review process that we voted on last year.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Danielle Corpin, Moral Road. You said a lot of what I was going to say. So last year, we voted on forming the committee to study the withdrawal from Shaker Regional School District. A study committee explored a scenario in which the town would operate our elementary school and pursue contracts with public middle and high schools in the area, including Belmont. This would provide more options for academic, athletic and extracurricular activities for our students. While initial findings looked feasible, the committee could not complete the study without the expertise to navigate the complicated educational law on policies. For your reference, the report they completed is posted on the SAU website. It's at the Historical Society and it's with the town for our community members to take a look. The topic of our participation in the Shaker Regional School District has not been formally studied and documented for 40 years, more than 40 years. In this time, the town has experienced significant growth and is on the cusp of further growth. It's inevitable. Currently, we have no good plan as to how our schools would accommodate any increases in our population. As a community member and a parent of two children at CES, I attended the majority of the meetings and I was impressed with the thoroughness of the study. This was a fact-finding mission and I learned several facts that I was previously unaware of. I learned that we as a town no longer have bonded debt to the district for the building of Belmont High School. I learned that the current tuition in amount for Belmont High School would be $18,400 per student per year, which is among the highest in our area. This is compared to schools such as Concord, which would be $15,500 per student per year. Winniswong, that would be $16,800. And even Bo, $17,200. I learned that 18% of the students in the district are from Canterbury, while we pay 23.1% of the operating budget. Finally, I learned that Canterbury has 218 children in the school district. Additionally, the town has 25 registered homeschooling children, at least 23 children attending private schools and four children whose families are paying tuition in other public schools. That means about 20% of students in this town do not attend our public schools. That fact alone should be cause for concern. Funding this study will produce key data that compares our schools to others around us. And we could do good things with that data. We can use it to ask the school district to make improvements to our schools and to make us more comparable with surrounding towns. I encourage you to vote for Warren Article 10. This would instruct the town to form a new withdrawal study committee.
Nine.
Oh, sorry. Change.
I'm voting for 10, too.
All right. Right. Um, so we would need to appropriate $12,000 for the purpose of engaging educational and legal consultants necessary to complete the review. As Bob said, a vote for Warren Article 9 is not a vote to withdraw from the district. It's a vote to enlist the professionals needed to complete the study. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
John Vogel, Happy Road. I've been an educator at the high school L for 50 years now. And it's my strong belief that dissolving the district and withdrawing our students from the middle school and the high school does not serve, um, the common good. Local schools encourage and promote county community service. While tuitioning our grade seven through 12 students to Concord, Pennecook... Will tuitioning our grade seven through twelve students to Concord, Canuck, Tilton, or whomever will accept our students foster that special connection between town and community? Are any of those, are any of the schools in those towns, Concord, Canuck, Tilton, are they obligated to take our students with special needs? Are our home-school students, will our, will our home-school students continue to have the opportunity to take advantage of after-school clubs, music, drama, athletics, as they do now in the Belmont schools? My fear is that the answer to each of these questions is no. I stand in opposition to Article Nine.
Hi, Darren. I'm Ruth Toland, Dela, but Hackleboro Road. And I was one of the members of the committee we all voted for last year to start studying what withdrawal may make life. I want to stress that this warrant article is not passing to withdraw from Shaker Regional. We're asking to continue the study with the professional support we need to finish it. We looked and found there are a number of other options out there that offer expanded academic, extracurricular, and athletic opportunities for students. I have three school-aged children in Canterbury. This is personal to me, and to many others here in this town, too. On the committee, we learned about different ways that other small towns have made similar, expanded opportunities available for their students. Tuition agreements negotiated between sending towns and receiving districts address things like special education and extracurriculars, all of the things that we, as parents and townspeople, care about. That's something we can negotiate and something we need legal counsel to help with. Simply put, we know that other options are out there, but the study process doesn't stop there. We also need to understand whether and how making those options available can be done in a legal and fiscally responsible manner. We need the assistance of a professional consultant, specialized legal counsel, to finish what we started, and only then can we truly evaluate how best to allocate our education tax dollars. Twelve thousand dollars is a relatively modest amount, considering the importance of what we're studying. And I ask that you support the warrant article. Thank you.
Ned Wollam, uh, one thirty-two. It's the first time I've ever done this, so excuse, excuse me. We moved to Canterbury twenty-one years ago. For, one of the reasons we moved here was because we wanted to get away from a big-city school like Concord, where we lived prior. During that timeframe, I remember everything that was happening with the town of Barnstead. Barnstead did not have a high school, I believe, no school at the time. And then every single year, their children had to, or their, um, families had to apply, this is the new students, had to apply to other towns like Co-Brown, Caddan, and so on, uh, to, um, send their kids to those schools. So those schools had the ability to say no. And I remember every single year, there were students at the beginning of the school year, they had nowhere to go to school because they did not get an accepted application. So that's one of the reasons, one of the things that I think about every time I hear about this is they, I just can't get my head around that. How can you not have a place to go to school? The schools have the ability to say no, so if they don't want somebody for whatever, whatever reason, then, you know, they, they're going to scramble every year. And, uh, Barnstead finally, um, got on with Prospect Mountain. And I have a friend whose, um, son entered the school system just after Prospect Mountain High School was, um, built, and he has quite a bit to say that I asked him to send me an email. It's not something I can, you know, average during committee meetings or whatever, that goes that way. I would like for you to share that. Uh, the other thing was, uh, Bo pulled out of Concord High School around the same time. But the difference between Bo and Canterbury is Canterbury is not building the new high school. Bo did. So, all Bo kids were going to one place. So there, there was a withdrawal from that system into their own system with all three schools. Obviously, Canterbury would not have that ability. The other thing that bothers me is, um, you know, having put four kids through Belmont. I don't have any problem with Belmont, my kids may disagree, but, um, when you, when, um, you look at the sports, um, right now, we've got two teams that play with Guilford. We have the football team and we have the hockey team. And those teams are all based on the, um, school, the size of the school district. That's how the state does it, if anybody doesn't realize that. So they put them into different, um, divisions. The football team this year, um, lost in the state championship. The hockey team won this state championship. And those were, those were Belmont and Guilford together. If Canterbury pulls out of them, that's going to alter all of that. We won't have the same numbers, and that is going to make them have to change districts. My youngest son, who's now twenty-four, as of yesterday, was on the first team that played, um, through the, uh, the football program, where they were all, they started out in the football program. I'm sorry, it's hard to understand, but, so, it, it just, it bothers me that now we got, we would have to go back on all that, that, um, you know, all that that they built for those two programs. And I would say that I am against it.
There's a one.
Nancy Fly, Briar Road. I speak against this only because I don't like to waste money. Because our choices, I hear some people think, you know, they're worried about how long we have to drive up to Belmont. And if you're changing to a different place, you're going to be driving just as far no matter where you're going. Close as one is MV, and it's going to be the same drive all the time. So, driving around is just going to be a fact of life here in Canterbury. And, um, you know, my son went through Belmont High. I thought it was actually a pretty good system. He certainly had a great time. And so I, I, I speak in opposed to it because I just don't want to waste money.
My name is Bob Scarpone, the Club One Road. And I've served as the chairman of the dissolution committee forty years ago, in nineteen eighty-two, when we wanted to dissolve the district. And at that point in time, I was very much leaning towards the idea, you know what? Canterbury should go along. We, you know, the two towns are not quite compatible. And so maybe the idea would be to dissolve. And so, I got, I'm chairman of the committee. And so we did a, I think, thorough study. It's posted on the Historical Society website. It's in an archive. And that report concluded that we should not. We investigated all of the options that I think this committee talked about. We talked to all the schools. But the background of that talking to all the schools in the area was, when Shaker Regional was, was created, it was created by a town in Canterbury who was sending their kids all over the place, to Tilton, to Concord, to, um, other schools. Transportation was a problem. And so that was a difficult time. I, I think a study, another study, is if it makes people feel more comfortable with the idea of staying in the district, then people should. Or maybe you discover some things that we, at that time, did not. After all, the town is still forty square, forty-four square miles. And if you lived in one Canterbury, you would have to travel south. If you lived in south, you're going to have to travel north. So, distances don't change. And maybe I would suggest that we spend this money to do this study, but maybe we all think about, how can we improve Shaker Regional to be more, um, palatable to everyone? And not have this sense that we're not getting what we need, but rather what we all want. So, that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
I'm Kaylee Shepherd. I live on Morale Road, and I have since nineteen ninety when my parents built that house. Um, I spoke in favor of forming the committee last year because I was one of the students that went to Pride at Row for high school and home school for middle school. I, I guess I'd like to not speak and repeat what I did last year, but more talk about, um, there was mentioned before me that a decreased sense of community if you don't go to the Belmont Middle School and High School. I didn't go to either of those schools. And I can tell you that Canterbury is not defined by Belmont Middle School and High School as far as community goes. Canterbury is its own community. I moved back here, this is my town, this is my hometown. I would never think of moving away. And I don't feel like I was any less of that community because I didn't attend those two schools. And again, I think we need to reaffirm that this is not a vote to withdraw from the district. This is a vote for information. And twelve thousand dollars is a paltry sum compared to everything else we voted on tonight to have that necessary and more information for other parents.
Maybe I can go over. Um, so someone's been here for about three years. I'll say that, um, this is an amazing community. I've got four kids. My oldest is now in college. I've got three other kids. All of them are active members of their local community. It's a privilege to be here. My kids are home-schooled. So frankly, I have, I guess, double skin. I mean, I don't have skin, I don't have, I pay for it. So take that for what you want. But I will say this, my desire as being part of this community is to make sure that all the kids, regardless of what situation they're in and availability, I'm fortunate, blessed, that my wife and I are able to homeschool. My wife has an option. I want to make sure that our kids have those, you know, have those options. I'm just looking at it, granted, you know, not in my backyard where I am, on Morale Road. And I know my son, when we first moved here, he finished up his year at Winnis Pond. It's frankly closer for him to get to Winnis Pond than if he had been finished up with his high school year at Belmont, just distance-wise. And again, that's just the nature of this town. It's amazing that we have that large an area, but just the nature of trying to get to the side of town can take quite a long time. I think it's worth taking the twelve thousand dollars to at least do this right, find out. I mean, obviously, you know, Bob said nineteen eighty-two, that's the year I was born, put in perspective, like. So, obviously, they did a good job, I think, at that time, reviewing it, looking it over, because that's been thirty years, you know, forty years now, right? They did a good job of looking that over. So hoping that we can continue to do that, look this over, do it right, find out what the options are. And I would, I'm going to vote yes to, uh, at least spend this money to at least do this right, and hopefully we make some good options for next year.
Thank you. I am planning to close debate after the two folks that are in line. That, uh, is okay with me?
Great. Damon Meek, Shaker Road. I, I don't believe I've seen any, um, description of where that figure of twelve thousand came from. Is that, how do we know that's going to be adequate in, in a year's time? We're not coming back here saying, well, we, we need more? Because it seems like we're, uh, discovering more as the process goes along. So I, just a little understanding of where that figure came from.
Yeah, our, our committee chair and his school board representative, Randy Johnson, we've got, uh, you know, the timer facing the corner at the moment. Uh, we actually have actual quotes from an education consultant and an estimate of billable hours from an appropriate law firm that went into that number, and we add some extra on top. Apparently, education consultancy is less expensive than I would have thought. But, um, so we have some room and within that figure to hopefully get it done.
Skye Samson, New York. So, I don't think that Belmont is the perfect school district, having graduated from there myself, uh, six years ago now. However, I think that whatever school district we may end up in won't be present either. That's just the nature of going to school, growing up. I would be encouraged to spend this twelve thousand dollars to do the study, but I don't think we should withdraw. I think we should use the knowledge we gained from the study in order to make more informed choices and recommendations to our school district and improve the school district we already have.
We will vote on the article. To see if the town will vote to instruct the Shaker Regional School Board to form a committee to initiate a review of the feasibility and suitability for the town of Canterbury to withdraw from the Shaker Regional School District pursuant to the provisions of the Hampshire RSA 19525, and to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve thousand dollars for the purpose of engaging educational and legal consultants as necessary to complete the review. All those in favor, use your green cards. The opposed, red cards? Motion passes.